Good evening, and I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Discovery STEM Academy, Adriana Brown and Enzo Shorter. First, Adriana will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Enzo, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. So Adriana, if you would, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Adriana Brown, and I'm a Discovery STEM Academy Explorer. I'm in fifth grade, and I serve as the SCA co-president. My hope for tonight is that everyone is on one accord and that we gain real solutions to real problems. And I am thankful for this. I will be reading Phenomenal Woman by Maya Angelou.
Thank you.
Pretty women wonder where my secret lies. I'm not cute or built to suit a fashion model's size, but when I start to tell them, they think I'm telling lies. I say it's in the reach of my arm, the span of my hips, the stride of my step, the curl of my lips. I'm a woman phenomenally, phenomenal woman, that's me.
Enzo, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started?
My name is Enzo Shorter. I am a third grader at Discovery STEM Academy. I love going to school there because I learn a lot about science and math. I enjoy learning about space, especially the sun and the planets. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for participating in tonight's meeting. You guys did a really wonderful job. It's, all of us present here are really proud of you and honored that you're scholars in Newport News Public Schools. That's really exciting. I know you have family members and probably some school members who are here to support you. Would those individuals please stand? And thanks each one of you all for entrusting your children to us, and thanks for coming tonight. The next item on tonight's agenda is the school board recognition. So Dr. Mitchell, please join me at the podium.
Thank you very much. Each year, the National School Boards Association Magna Award Program recognizes school districts taking bold and innovative steps in educating students. The 2024 Awards Program focused on innovation and education while recognizing school district programs that solve the challenge with creativity and out-of-the-box strategies. An independent panel of school board members, administrators, and other educators reviewed hundreds of submitted programs and selected the top for national recognition. We're proud to recognize that Newport News Public Schools earned a 2024 Silver Award for its Youth Development Program. Newport News Public Schools Youth Development Program is honored for its unique infrastructure of dedicated school-based teams who increase the school division's ability to implement evidence-based programming at every school. This evening, we're proud to recognize the members of the Youth Development Administrative Team who lead and guide our division-wide programming. Please join me in congratulating Bridget Adams, Director of Youth and Family Engagement. Michael Nichols, Youth Development Supervisor. Christina Buckingham, Youth Development Specialist. And William Shackelford, Youth Development Specialist. We also want to acknowledge and extend our congratulations to our more than 200 school-based staff who support, engage, and empower our students. Special thanks, of course, are also extended to our Activities Directors, our Youth Development Leads, our Empowerment Coaches, our Gun Violence Intervention Prevention Site Directors, Live Well Student Wellness Coaches, and our school-based club, athletics, and activities sponsors. And I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Tiffany Smith, who's joining us today, Tiffany Jones, excuse me Tiffany, who is our Coordinator of Family and Community Engagement. Thank you for joining us as well. Newport News Public Schools' positive youth development initiatives build essential skills and empower students to lead, serve, and contribute from preschool through high school. Youth Development emphasizes student empowerment and leadership, inclusivity, positive school culture, and mentoring while teaching important social and emotional skills. Student outcomes demonstrate that students who are involved in school activities have better attendance and grades and fewer discipline incidents. Every student is encouraged to participate in at least one club, sport, or other enrichment activity. This award-winning youth development program is unique to Newport News Public Schools. We are the only school division in the state to boast such a robust, comprehensive infrastructure to positive youth development. Division-wide level programming includes Blossom, Bloom, and Flourish Girls Empowerment Programs, the Rise Male Mentorship Program, the Emerging Leadership Institute, the Level Up Elementary Prevention and Intervention Program, and my Brothers Keeper and my Sisters Keeper Violence Prevention Programs. Youth Development also coordinates numerous division-wide programs, which many of our students are familiar with, including the STAR Awards, which recognize students and clubs who are making positive contributions to their schools and communities, and STAN, the Division-wide Campaign to discourage bullying and harassing behavior and to promote positive school culture, and also Celebrate Me Week, a recognition of cultural heritage which promotes a sense of belonging for students and staff among many, many other activities throughout the school year. Bridget Adams, our Superintendent, Dr. Michelle Mitchell, and our school board member, our Vice Chair, Dr. Terry Best, were recognized during the National School Boards Association's Annual Conference in New Orleans earlier this month. The school division, along with other Magna Program Award winners, is featured in the April issue of the American School Board Journal. So again, to this wonderful central office-based team, we say congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. At this time, we'll take about a nine-minute break so that our honorees and our student guests and their families may leave if they desire to do so. You know, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about nine minutes. Thank you.
For many sports fans, March Madness is the most anticipated event of the year. But March just got more exciting, with Newport News Public Schools hosting March Mania at Minchville High School. For the second year, the Family and Community Engagement Team hosted this exciting weekend event for all families to enjoy. On the main court, various high school student teams faced off against adult teams. Both male and female staff were victorious against the combined junior varsity and varsity teams. But the student all-stars finished the day with a hard-fought win over the Newport News Police Department, who love using basketball to build positive relationships across the city. In between games, generous local businesses donated prizes to some excited winners. Meanwhile, in the smaller gym, 150 students participated in a series of age-appropriate basketball clinics. Basketball coaches from various NMPS high schools ran groups of energetic students through advanced drills to sharpen their ball-handling skills. But March Mania offered families even more. Educators, along with Minchville's Air Force JROTC cadets, hosted a variety of fun math activities for all grade levels. Each of these math-related games use items that can be found at home so families can reinforce important math skills anytime. Another great family game that flexes the brain is chess. Volunteers with Hampton Roads Chess Association taught 100 students how to play, many learning for the very first time. And throughout the hallways, community partners and educators offered a range of valuable local resources focused on character building, math mentoring, and mental health. With an amazing collection of sports and educational activities for all ages, 540 people enjoyed everything that March Mania offered this year. Throughout March, Women's History Month honors the remarkable contributions of women to history, culture, and society. Meanwhile, young ladies at Greenwood and Riverside Elementary Schools are paving their own path to success through computer science. Once a week, students at both schools start their morning with Girls Who Code, a fun and engaging club experience for interested third through fifth graders that aims to close the gender gap in the career field of technology. Teachers and instructional technology coaches set up hands-on activities and fun challenges to introduce the young ladies to coding and programming languages. Through these experiences, the girls learn how to problem-solve, think creatively, collaborate with others, build confidence by sharing their ideas, and grow as strong leaders. By participating in Girls Who Code, the hope is that many of these young ladies will pursue future careers in STEM fields. But before that day comes, Girls Who Code will help them now as they create strong bonds through sisterhood, learn the basis of computer coding, and make a positive impact on their community and the world. Middle school volleyball wrapped up its 14th season with four different schools represented at the girls and boys tournaments hosted at Warwick High School. In eight of the last nine seasons, Ella Fitzgerald and Gildersleeve have met in the girls' championship game. And one of these teams has been in every tournament over the past 14 seasons. So it was no surprise to see these teams vying for the championship crown again this year. But after settling for runner-up the last four seasons, the Gildersleeve Seahawks won this year's girls' championship. This was the second-year coaching at Gildersleeve for Coach Juan Puentez, who also teaches and coaches at Minchville High. Better known as Coach Low to his players, he attributed the team's success to strong serves and crisp passes on offense. Gildersleeve and Ella Fitzgerald are now tied with six volleyball championships each, setting up a dramatic 2025 season. On the boys' court, Crittendon faced off against Washington. The Crittendon Cougars were making their second appearance ever in the championship round, while the Washington Bay Savers were hoping to reverse last season's outcome, where they lost the tournament game to Huntington. Washington's young team won the first set, but Crittendon fought back, forcing a third set. Ultimately, the Washington Bay Savers prevailed as citywide champions. For adapted physical education specialist Coach Susan McCollough, this was her third season coaching at Washington. This year's team didn't have a height advantage over other schools, but they communicated well, developed a strong student leader, and had a great desire to win as a team. Washington's boys have now earned three tournament wins in the past 14 seasons of middle school volleyball. Fourth graders from Discovery STEM Academy and Newsome Park Elementary visited the Mariners Museum for an exciting trip back in time. The field trip aligned perfectly with the students' exploration of the American Civil War and the historical maritime battle between the USS Monitor and CSS Virginia. The Mariners Museum hosted an Ironclad Marvels Field Experience, specifically for the students enrolled in each school's STEM-themed Magna Programs. The in-depth and engaging educational program, tied in with the fourth-grade pacing guide, and emphasized relevant Virginia standards of learning. Students toured the Mariners Museum's award-winning exhibit, Ironclad Revolution, using a scavenger hunt card to focus their exploration on the Battle of Hampton Roads. By viewing artifacts from the wreck of the USS Monitor, reading historical documents, and listening to personal accounts, the students were fully immersed in learning about a significant moment in American history. As the students further explored the USS Monitor Center, they learned about different careers at a museum, including the job of curator to manage collections, research artifacts, and care for them while they're displayed. Students then dove into a hands-on STEM activity to simulate the various jobs of divers, researchers, and team managers as they explored a cannon retrieved from the Monitor's wreck on the ocean floor. The entire learning experience was free for every fourth grader at Discovery STEM Academy and Newsome Park, with Mariners Museum covering the cost of the educational trip. Newsome Park Elementary celebrated Read Across America Week with a community of readers. Reading Specialist Barbara Brinker invited guest readers to visit every grade and classroom. 14 excited readers took time to read, including NMPS Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell, city leaders, community partners, retired educators, and a former Newsome Park student. Beyond reading grade-relevant literature, these special guests also shared a little bit about how reading is important in their careers, what they enjoy about reading, and what some of their favorite books are. Barbara Brinker also worked with each grade to combine reading with classroom learning experiences through the theme "Building Literacy Through STEM." Every grade-level STEM challenge was introduced by reading a book. The style of each STEM activity varied across grades, since every challenge was designed to align precisely with their grade-level content. Through these hands-on and engaging lessons, students worked in teams to blend literacy, STEM, and various content areas to tackle a real-world challenge. By showing students the benefits of becoming a lifelong reader and expanding their scope of how much we can learn from reading, Read Across America Week was an important step to help the Newsome Park navigators find their own love of reading.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. We're going to change our agenda up just a tad. We're going to go ahead and move to our personnel actions that we have on the agenda for this evening. So Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Tonight-
Actually, I need to vote. We need to, we'll vote first on this. So do I have a motion to approve the personnel actions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for John Downer, Assistant Principal, location to be determined, Michelle Gunter, Assistant Principal, Stony Run Elementary, and Dr. Steve Pollard, Assistant Principal, Sanford Elementary School.
Do I have a second? Oh, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, now please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I was so eager. So now, Dr. Mitchell, would you please introduce us to our new family members?
Thank you very much, Madam Searl's Law. Tonight, I would like to introduce our newest members of our team. And as I call your name, if you don't mind standing so everyone can get to see who you are. I'd like to first introduce Mr. John Downer as the new Secondary Assistant Principal for the school year of 2024-2025. He, his location will be to be determined. Mr. Downer has an Education Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership with a concentration in Administration and Supervision from Old Dominion University. He currently works as the Lead Social Studies Teacher at Woodside High School. And I might add, he also, if I am correct, is the Teacher of the Year. Was the Teacher of the Year.
Last year.
Last year for Woodside High School. A phenomenal teacher. We certainly are looking forward to working with you. If you have anyone with you that you would like to have acknowledged, please feel free to have them stand, and we'll give them around. Okay, if you would please stand so we can see you and acknowledge you. And thank you.
Welcome.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Michelle Gunter as the new Assistant Principal at Stony Run Elementary School for this current year, 2023-2024. She has a Master's of Education degree in Educational Leadership with a concentration in pre-K through 12th grade from Regent University. She currently, prior to this moment, was working as the Administrative Assistant at Stony Run with Newport News Public School. She has, throughout her career, been a teacher and an assistant principal, and she actually taught in Newport News some years ago. So we were happy when you came back as an administrative assistant, and we are certainly happy to promote you to an Assistant Principal. Do you have family and friends with you tonight?
I do. I have my daughter with me, Alyssa, and I have my friend with me, Dr. Stafford.
Thank you so much. And our last that we would like to recognize tonight, I'd really like to introduce Dr. Steve Pollard as the new Assistant Principal at Sanford Elementary School for this school year, 2023-2024. Dr. Pollard has a Doctorate of Education from Regent University. He currently works as an elementary teacher with Chesapeake Public Schools. He has also worked as an elementary teacher for Virginia Beach Public Schools, and we are excited to have you join our team. Welcome to Newport News Public Schools, Dr. Pollard. And if you have someone with you, would you like to have them stand?
Yes, I do. So over here is my mom, and I have two of my friends here. This is Ashley, and this is Anthony.
Welcome to our team. And I would like to ask Dr. Van Dyke to please stand because we appreciate you being here. He is the principal at Sanford Elementary, and I'm sure you two will be a great team for the remainder of the year. And that concludes our new and newest employees.
Perfect. Thank you. So now, we're going to let you all, if you want to go celebrate and have a meal or whatever, give, you'll have a moment to, we'll give you a moment to leave before we go on with our meeting, but you're very welcome to stay for the duration if you choose. Don't be shy. Okay, during our regularly, excuse me, I cannot speak tonight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. I will say that we have cards that will take us through our allotted 30 minutes, and depending upon how we do at the mic, I will petition the board for an additional 10 minutes. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. Natalie Chamberlain, Reverend Natalie Chamberlain.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Mitchell. I wasn't sure I'd get to be first tonight. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain, pastor of Hilton Christian Church, a congregation who welcomes and embraces people of all genders and gender identities. I'm a citizen and resident of Newport News. I've been addressing this board for the past several months. I've addressed issues of morality, faith, and safety. The most important points I have made have to do with the increased danger trans students experience under the policy so nonsensically called "protection of trans students." Trans students are also much more likely to deal with mental health crises, including suicidal ideations and attempts, than their non-trans counterparts in the district. I believe wholeheartedly that most of you care passionately about the children and youth in your care and that you recognize that this policy as it stands is ill-conceived. It is also quite obvious that you're unable or possibly unwilling to change it. Therefore, I directly address you, Dr. Mitchell. You can change this before the start of business tomorrow if you choose. Please, change the- Please, change the policy back to what it was before your procedural changes were implemented. Protect the children you've been hired to care for.
Mary Voss.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dr. Mitchell, Board Chair Searl's Law, and Vice Chair Dr. Terry Best, as well as the rest of the Board. My name is Mary Voss. I'm an N N P S teacher, parent, and graduate, and I'm also Secretary of the Newport News Education Association, the Educators Union in Newport News. To just start off on a side note before I move into some N N E A updates, I do want to remind the Board that the N N E A and V E A have both released formal statements opposing Yonkin's discriminatory guidance that targets trans and other L G B T Q-plus students. Yonkin's guidance was implemented last fall without a Board vote, and the public deserves a vote on this matter in order to know where our elected officials stand on the topic of discriminating against vulnerable students. If a vote to allow Board members to vote on controversial procedures is needed to call a Board vote on Yonkin's guidance, please, let's get that done as soon as possible. Moving on to some important N N E A announcements, I'm pleased to share that at the V E A convention this past weekend, out of over one hundred V E A locals across the state, our local union, the N N E A, was selected as winner of the statewide V E A Fund for Political Activism. In addition, our local V E A Uniserve office posted the third-highest membership increase in Virginia. So, we have great things happening in N N E A, and I want to invite N N P S employees to visit our website at NewportNewsEducationAssociation.com to learn more about us and about the benefits of membership. In addition, the N N E A is making good progress with our Authorization Card Campaign to Win Collective Bargaining Rights, also known as Contract Negotiations, for N N P S employees. So, again, I invite N N P S employees to check out our website. We have a section called Authorization Cards that they can click on for more information, and we can- they can connect with us, and we can help them get information on and sign their Authorization Card. We've already exceeded fifty percent in one employee category, and we look forward to hitting a majority in other categories soon. Contract negotiations would provide N N P S teachers and staff a seat at the bargaining table to negotiate for improved working conditions. Of course, teacher and staff working conditions are student-learning conditions, so giving employees a voice in the details of our contracts will also help our students and their families and the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Matt DeGrave.
Good evening, School Board Members. My name is Matt DeGrave. I am a parent here in the city of Newport News. My kids go to school, both my kids now. I have a couple of things. So, on the lighter note of items, the clear plastic backpacks that are there are not of poor quality, but my son has already gone through three of them with all of the books and Chromebooks that he's had to carry, and then, when he goes to go get more, they're not available for him. One of the things that I would like to ask, is it possible that we buy our own or make more available? I understand that that's, you know, they got to come in as their purchase, and I'm sure lots of other kids are having the same issues. On the more serious notes, Governor Yonkin's trans policies are not great. I realize that the School Board hasn't voted on them to bring them up and has come up with their own model policies. But under Governor Northam, the policies, while they may not have been great, they were developed, you know, with kids in mind to protect students who are vulnerable in the Newport News City Public School systems. I really think we need to stick with those policies that are out there, because we did- you just were here to protect the kids. It's- it may be a small minority of kids, but if we could prevent a set of kids from feeling like the only way that they can continue to live is to commit suicide, or to feel better is to commit suicide or something like that. It's not great. We need to find them the services that they can, and we also need to show that we will protect them from parents who may not be as willing or open to discussing these issues. And something that came up tonight, I had a little bit more prepared on that to talk about it, but you guys will probably hear a lot more. So, I guess with that, just please reinstate Governor Northam's policies that he came up with. Something that came up tonight that was of interest, I need to do a little more research into. Doug Brown apparently has been asking his church that he's a member of to bring a church-led program into the Newport News City Public School Systems. I don't know if it's been brought up to the School Board yet. Apparently, this program is called Lifewise Academy. From what I have seen, the church itself is very political, so they're not a political group. And I would just like to ask the City Board, the School Board, to not adopt any of these policies and, as a matter of fact, to vote. The fact is, is that students are allowed to pray in school if they wish to. There's no law against that. There's no law against teachers praying in school if they wish to, or expressing their religious preferences. However, we can't have outside sources coming into the schools and potentially proselytizing to students. I disagree with that. I need more information on this myself. This is something that just came up. But if that is the truth, it is pretty egregious separation or violation of church-state separation, and I would appreciate it if the School Board looked into that. And, oh, my time's up anyway, but thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Eric Burton? Eric Burton?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Burton. I'm with Newport News Transportation. As y'all have seen last time, when I was here, I'm a key driver for one of our schools. Our- one of our concerns right now is the safety on the buses. And I don't want to go into too many details on some of it, because this is public, you know, this form is. But these metal detectors we have are getting bypassed daily with items, stuff is getting on the buses. As y'all have seen in the news a couple of months ago, you know, there was a knife reported on one of the buses, and the police had to go out to it. Also, in the area surrounding us, which is also the same students that move out of our area and come to this area, they have reported a bullet on one of the buses and other weapons. We have no way of knowing when these are on the bus. There's no way to check for it. We're not allowed to do anything about it. And we hear these students all day long talking about how they're defeating our metal detectors, because we have seventy of them on our bus, and we listen to them, and they don't realize that we're hearing it. One thing I'm asking is this, if we can take our safety a little more seriously and not just put test the metal detectors up, but constant review on how they're getting around them and how we can adjust for that. Another thing is the safety at the bus stops and at the schools. We're having a lot of issues with our bus loops at our schools. By law, when our buses are loading students or discharging students, we cannot have other vehicles going past those buses. That is why there is a bus loop with a physical divider between us and the parking lot. But there are schools that are bringing parents into a bus loop now, because it's convenient. Because of that, we do have one school that they have to use their stop sign. They have to have stop signs out. Every time they pass that bus, two hundred and fifty-dollar ticket. We're at the point now, do we have to do that in the bus loops? There are bus loops no longer safe. One of the schools that I'm at, every day, I wish it was once a week or less, but every day, I'm going to remind parents, please don't come through here. You're shooting right past my bus, going about ten, fifteen miles an hour. You're not even slowing down for a crosswalk while I have students coming to get on. We just had a student yesterday almost hit at our school, because people are not reading the signs, they're not obeying them, but yet, our answer is from the school system, from most of these schools is, what do you want us to do about it? So, we're asking your help to help enforce the rules that are currently there and the laws that we have for our students' safety. One last thing for y'all is due to numerous requests that we have seen from teachers and coaches and staff is, when we take them on field trips, we drop them off and we leave them. They are afraid, if they ever have to evacuate or something happens, how long it will take for us to get back to them, because we might already be at home, then we got to go back, get the bus, and then get to where they're at. The other thing is, just recently, yesterday, we had a group of kids stuck in another city, because that driver couldn't get to them. We had nobody for them. It took hours to get them. Y'all have a great day.
Adam Morrow. Adam Morrow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board. Last month, I came up here. I told you I had a petition with two hundred signatures on it. This, asking you to overturn Governor Yonkin's transphobic policies. I pointed out that that was more signatures than some of you had won your seats by. That numbers- the number of signatures gone up. There's two hundred and fifty on it, last I checked, and it could be more now. That is more than several of you won your seats by. I'm not- I'm sure you're all very passionate about supporting the Newport News School Board and the Newport News Public Schools. If you want to be able to keep doing that from your positions, you might want to begin reconsidering your stance on this. Thank you.
David Brickman.
Thank- I'd like to thank the Board for letting me speak today and for responding to my emails, clarifying that the decision-making power with respect to the implementation of the model policies lies with the Superintendent, and I'm- would like to address the history of my previous comments before the Board to the Superintendent today. The reasoning that we have to- or the- the claim that we have to implement the procedure this way in order to comply with the law is not meaningful. It's not necessary to protect Newport News Public Schools from litigation, because there wasn't any enforcement action from the state. The first time that model policies were introduced, and people did or Boards did or did not comply with them, the law also says that the policies provided by the Virginia Board of Education are to instruct compliance with state, federal, and case law, and that's explicitly the antithesis of Yonkin's model policies. It's to- the goal is to create new case law to challenge the understanding of gender identity as a part of sex under, as far as the courts are concerned. The procedure saying that we will make every effort to respect trans students, except for in the immediately following sentence using the chosen name in conversation, is very transparent and frustrating. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ash Chegawam.
Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Members of the School Board. I'm here to talk about Governor Yonkin's LGBT policies yet again. It has been five months since these policies were rudimentarily implemented by Dr. Mitchell. Five months of pain and suffering for chance to understand students in your care. Tonight, I want to speak to the backers of Policy J P P on this Board. I'm not going to name names, but you know who you are, and I'm reasonably certain we know who you are too. I want to confront you tonight with the people on your side, as it were, in this issue. People like Oklahoma State Senator Tom Woods, who just days after the murder of a student in his district, referred to LGBT people as filth who do not have a place in our society. People like the State Superintendent in Oklahoma, Ryan Walters, who helped fuel hate with policies strikingly similar to your own. Those same people have ties to white supremacist and dominionist groups, groups that seek to broaden the scope of persecution beyond just queer people, but to everyone who does not fit their mold. Groups focused on anger and hate and moving us back as a society. But to what end? I want to ask you this. What does your ideal society look like? What is your goal here? What policy goals, what substantive changes do you have that aren't based on simply rolling back the gains made by people that aren't you? I know you might think what I'm about to say is a bit of a stretch, but building any society, better or worse, starts at school. It's the only thing that we all have in common in one form or another. I want you to- want to encourage you to imagine this. What will you do when you're finally done with this project, finally done stripping away the rights from all but your in-group? Imagine what your society would look like, how it would feel living in a community hollowed out from the inside, a community stripped of the diversity and difference that is so core to the human experience, where anything unique is crushed or frittered away, and so much beauty has been destroyed. Only then will you be able to look back on the society that you've built for yourselves, and only then will you weep over it. If that's what you want, by all means, keep Governor Yonkin's policies in place, lay the groundwork for that ending. Or, if you're courageous enough, do what's right. Repeal Governor Yonkin's policies and let our society thrive, free from fear, free from repression, and free from hate. And I want to end with this final point. The hyenas that you've set upon your queer constituents will come for you next. No matter how many people you feed them, they will never be satiated. The only way for us to keep our community safe is to steadfastly refuse the hyenas' demands for further meals and let them starve in the face of our diversity. Thank you.
Valerie Fashion.
Good evening, Dr. Mitchell and School Board Members. My name is Valerie Fashion, and I'm a grandparent, and I'm also advocating for my grandchildren in the thousands of schools in Newport News School District. My grandson is in the kindergarten, and since entering kindergarten in August of 2023, three marking periods, one hundred and thirty-five days, he has not brought home not one spelling word. However, he's being given a spelling test every week on Fridays. This is not acceptable, and I don't understand why this Board allows this to happen. And I would like to know what is the name and the date of the study and a research that this school district is using that shows that students learn how to spell words better without being given any words to study. Right now, this district has hundreds of fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders that are reading on the third, second, first, and beginning reading levels. Being a bookless school district is not making the majority of students in this district career and college ready. Why was this bookless curriculum chosen for Newport News School District? Also, as a grandparent and as a joint guardianship for my grandson, I called Ella Fitzgerald to ask to be placed on the email list and to be placed on the phone call list so that I can understand and know what's going on in school every week. They told me they could only call one person out of the family. That was discouraging. And also, without an education, our students will be eliminated from opportunities in education, corporate America, entrepreneurship, and the public sector. Thank you for your time.
Carl Brickman.
Good evening. I'm a parent who had a child come through the Newport News School System from peep all the way through graduation. He graduated in 2012. Talking about the Special Education Advisory Committee and the review of the Special Education Annual Plan. Just briefly going over the website tonight, I was- I noticed, you know, the membership has not been updated since 2020. The committee is supposed to be made up of a majority of parents. On the 2020 roster, there was only two parents out of a, and I think, I don't know, thirteen advisory members from the school. So, let's see. Also, yeah, there's thirteen consulting members. They couldn't find any policies and procedures for special education, only operational guidelines. And when I was on the committee over fifteen years- And when I was on the committee over fifteen years ago, the state had said you can't call them operational guidelines. You have to call them, you know, policies and procedures. I don't see any forms there. I don't know what date the policies and procedures have been updated. I was wondering about the Part B flow-through funds. How much has been budgeted for preschoolers to get extended school years? How much has been budgeted for school-aged children to get extended school year to help address those particular needs? So, yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Board members, we've reached thirty minutes. Do I have a motion to extend until we go through the rest of the cards? It's four at this time. Do we have any more? Okay. Do I have a motion for us to extend time?
So move.
Thank you. And please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next to the podium is Ron Lee, Ronald Lee.
Hi. I want to say that I really thank you guys. You're doing an amazing job generally. I, uh, would vote for the vast majority of you guys if it was my choice. And Dr. Mitchell, pretty sure I would hire you. I think you do a great job, and I think you guys do a hard job. And even if you're being authentic, um, it's gotta be tough. When you run for office, you tell people about yourself, and you hope that those people believe in you. And when you don't measure up to them, it's gotta be, it's gotta be hard. And I think that most of you guys have the best of intentions, and that's admirable. What I can't understand, Mr. Brown, is when I looked at who donated to your campaign, how you must have presented yourself, because you had quite a few of Democrats donate money to your campaign. Your church is a political organization. They talk more about politics than Jesus. You guys do training from wallbuilders.org, an election-denying organization that teaches history, biblical citizenship, and all kinds of other things. Mr. Brown, do you think that slavery was not so bad in America? I know you've seen the videos, the crazy things that are said in that church. And you would ask them to bring Life Wise to Newport News. That tells me that you agree with what that pastor says, and you buy into what they say, and that you're on board. And it also tells me that you weren't authentic when you ran for office. There's no way that those people would have donated to you if you would have told them who you are. So while I love all of you guys, thank you guys for doing a great job. I will be here exposing who you are until the day you resign. And I would like to ask you that today is that day that you resign.
Michael Burnett.
Members of the board, Dr. Mitchell, thank you so much. My name is Reverend Michael Burnett. I forgot to use my honorific on the card, but just for fun. I serve multiple congregations in Newport News that share a mission of seeking and serving the divine image in all people, respecting the inherent worth and dignity of all people. And so, of course, I'm here to speak yet again against Procedure JBP. And here, I gotta be real honest with y'all. I am exhausted with this conversation, and I know y'all are too. Every tool in the box has been pulled out for this. We've talked about all the grand sweeping ethical things. We've talked about separation of church and state. And we know those who are going to intermingle church and state are going to be clever enough to know how to do so within the bounds of legal precedent. We've talked about how this procedure was implemented without a vote, and we've even got a policy right now, Policy CH, that's being workshopped and possibly being voted on next month to prevent that from happening in the future, but that doesn't go back and erase Procedure JBP. We've had personal entreaties to Dr. Mitchell to use her still-existent authority to go back and rescind that procedure. We've talked about the danger that this poses to students, that there are statistically, that there are, there are data-based evidence that this will harm students in your care. And from where I'm sitting, none, none of it seems to be sinking in. So I'm exhausted. I know that you serve first and foremost the students, and that's, or at least that, that is the motto. Although, from all the advocacy I heard up until the implementation of Procedure JBP, from so much of what I've heard from campaigns, it seems like the de facto alliance is to the parents and not the students. And frankly, if we're being real real, the allegiance is to Richmond and not even the parents of Newport News. I understand the desire to keep Richmond happy right now. I understand there are lawsuits pending and possibly more if these procedures stay on the books. And keeping the Attorney General's Office happy is important and significant to keeping our funding flowing and keeping things going well. But I have to ask. For that queer student who had an ally in a beloved teacher up until November, whose one lifeline to their personal happiness is now forbidden from calling them their chosen name or pronouns, is Richmond gonna foot the bills for that teacher's therapy bills when they're named in that student's suicide note? Thank you.
Effie McMillan.
Hi, uh, my name is Effie McMillan. I'm here again to talk about, uh, like a lot of people here tonight, the policies regarding trans students. And I'd like to bring your attention to the section in particular where parents are explicitly permitted to opt their child out of using facilities, quote, "where state or federal law requires schools to permit trans students to share otherwise sex segregated facilities." And specifically, this part of the policy is framed as an issue of privacy and safety, not, of course, for the children of a protected vulnerable class, but for the other children who might have the inconvenience of having to share a room with them. Now, I'm just wondering, where are the provisions that, say, can allow someone to opt children out of having to share facilities with those who practice minority religions? Uh, what about opting out children in order to protect, um, straight children's safety and privacy by making sure they never have to share a locker room with a queer student? I mean, I would expect similar, if not identical, policies to make sure parents can keep their child away from anyone they consider to be other, unless, of course, the board thinks that trans children pose a specific threat to non-trans children by the very nature of their identity and existence. But of course, that would fit the very definition of bigotry. And if any of you do hold that view, I'd really appreciate such an affirmation in writing, perhaps in an up or down vote. Just a thought. I have no idea if any of you are individually bigoted. But every month that you allow these bigoted policies to stay on the books in your names, you are effectively doing bigotry. And I understand that there has been some worry that the school board may open itself up to legal challenges by reversing these policies. But all that says to me is that you, who have been given direct mandates to think of children's well-being, are willing to let select vulnerable children get thrown under the bus to avoid litigation. And if that is truly where your moral calculus lands, well, I won't need that in writing. Your passivity and silence on the issue is all that I need. Thank you.
Gabri Porquez. Gabri. Do we have any other comments at this time? Thank you for your comments and thoughts this evening. Uh, we do appreciate you taking time to come and share. We'll now move on to Section Three, the Consent Agenda, which includes three point zero one minutes from the regular meeting, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, three point zero two minutes from the special meeting and work session, Mark, March, um, fifth, twenty twenty-four, three point zero three minutes from the public hearing, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, three point zero four financial reports, including the revenue report for March twenty twenty-four, the expense report for March twenty twenty-four, and the child nutrition reports for March twenty twenty-four. Three point zero five, the personnel report. Three point zero six, resolution to appoint hearing officers to hear teacher grievances. Three point zero seven, VSBA at-large seat nomination for Douglas Brown. And three point zero eight, budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Madam.
Yes.
I, I have, um, before we do approve the agenda, I like to remove or make a motion to, uh, move one of the agendas off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Which is three point oh seven, VSBA at-large seat nomination, Douglas Brown.
Um, do I have a second for the removal of that three point oh seven?
A second.
All right. Is there any discussion for the removal? All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
So I'm hearing there's amendment to the, um, the main motion to remove, three point zero seven, and that's what the board is getting ready to vote on, the amendment.
To, yeah, to, to remove it.
Okay.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries six one. Now, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes. Now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item three point zero seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And let's see here, my pages fell and they got a little bit out of order. So let me find my number four. Okay, here we are. All right. We are in four point zero two. Let's see, I am looking for the approval of our current, of our policies and new and revised policies, and I'm trying to see where I missed that on my sheet. Okay. Oh, I, that's right, I want to do the special education. That's what happens when you change up your agenda a little bit. So four point zero two, we'd like to, um, do an action item for the Special Education Annual Plan. And we actually heard a presentation, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. During our March meeting, as is customary, once a year, the Special Education Director, Vivian Latulow, comes before you and presents the proposed spending plan. So she presents to you what, with input from the CAC Committee as well as others, what we would like to spend the funding on. So tonight, we are asking you, we are seeking your approval for the proposed funding, spending plan that was presented to you last March. And just keeping in mind, the, the bulk of the funding is to pay for teachers, instructional assistance, materials and supplies, and things of that nature for students with disabilities.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Special Education Annual Plan?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Special Education Plan, IDEA Part B, in the amount of seven million seventy-six thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars, and IDEA Part B, PE grant funds, in the amount of two hundred seven thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now, the next item on our agenda is four point zero three, the new and revised policies. So, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At your March nineteenth school board meeting, Mrs. Tracy Brooks, Special Assistant to the Superintendent, shared over thirty revised and review policies and procedures to begin the review of the policy chapter on students. Since that time, Policy Committee members have provided responses to your questions. So this evening, the policies are coming before you for your approval. And given the quantity, they have been placed in five groups for your consideration.
Thank you very, very much. So do I have a motion, uh, to approve the new and revised policies? And we are going to take them in the five divided categories. So I will read, um, the category and then the, um, moniker for the actual policy. And then we will do a motion for the others subsequently. So do I have a motion for the administrative-related policies, which are JA, JCB, JEB, JHCA?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the administrative-related policies. JA, student policies, goals, priority and objectives. JCB, administrative transfers of students from one school to another. JEB, persons for whom education will be free. And JHCA, open slash closed campus.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next set is under the category of student assignment to schools and programs. Do I have a motion to approve JCA, JFAB, JFBD, JG, and JGA?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the policies under student assignments to schools and programs. JCA, assignment of students to school. JFABB, foreign exchange students. JFBD, magnet alternative programs. JG, assignment of students to classes and grade level. And JGA, assignment of twins or multiples in classrooms.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to bring up, um, and I don't know how we do this. JCA, the first sentence, there's some grammatical inconsistencies. It's by the school board and will be consistent with the desegregation obligations of the established by applicable federal court orders. So I think of the has to be pulled out to make sense of it.
Okay.
And I don't know how, if we can do that now, or if we have to pull it and bring it back.
Yes. So it's really a typo then?
Yeah, and will be consistent with the desegregation obligations established by applicable federal court orders, I think.
Ms. Bratley, what do you suggest the best way to handle that?
If you want to approve it with that correction.
Correction.
You can make the motion to approve it with that correction.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll make the
Move to make that correction as part of the approval.
Okay.
And I'll send you an email, so.
Sounds good. And do we have a second for that correction of
Second.
error? Thank you.
So I'm hearing that that correction is attached to the main motion? Yes.
So the main motion was already made to approve them without the correction?
Yes.
Yeah, so yours is an amendment to the main motion to approve it.
Okay. I'll call it. Roll on to include the, um,
So we have to put on the amendment.
Amendment and then
I'm sorry.
And which, which number is that one again?
JCA.
Oh, JCA, okay. Sounds good. All right, do we have, um, do we have any just further discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter. Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
The amendment passes seven zero, now we go back and vote on those, um, policies with that correction to J C A.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, do I have a motion to approve these policies for student assignment to schools and programs?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the policies, the student assignments to schools and programs with the correction for policy J C A, assignment of students to school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the student admission related policies? J E C, J F, J F A B, J F A B E, J F A B F, J F A B G, and J F B I.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the policies under student admissions related policies. J E C, admission of non-public, of non-public students for part-time enrollment. J F, student admissions to school. J F A B, admission- twenty, J F A B, admission of post-graduates. And J A F B I, admission of children of persons on active military duty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Harris, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the policies in the category of student health related policies? Those include J L C, J L C A, J L C C, J L C D, J L C E, J L C F, and J L C I.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policies under student health related policies. J L C, student health services and requirements. J L C A, physical examination of students. J L C C, communicable infectionous diseases. J L C D, administering medications to students. J L C E, first aid and emergency medical care. J L C F, school nurses. And J L C I, recommendation of medication by school employees.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Harris. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
The final set of policies to get a motion to approve are student activity related policies. J M, J N, J P, and J Q.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the stu- the student activity related policies. J M, student awards, honors, and scholarships. J N, student volunteers for community and community service. J P, student donations and gifts. And J Q, student fees and charges.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you all, and, uh, as I always say, thank you so much to our Policy Committee. Uh, as much as it took to read all of those, can you imagine how it was to review all of those? So, we really do appreciate, uh, your time and effort in allowing, um, the board time to, to give our recommendations as well. So, I'll move on to five point zero two, the attendance report. Five point zero three, the membership report. And five point zero four, construction report. Board members, you've received a copy of this report. Are there any questions at this time? I know, I'm just moving past. Alrighty, so, we need to go back and do a report because I was trying to approve the, uh, the group of reports, so we gotta listen to the report first. So, um, let's move on to section five, reports and information, and we have five point zero one, the Virginia Literacy Act. I was not trying to get rid of you, Lori, I promise.
I understand, I understand, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, tonight, Lori Wall, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, is here to share an update on the development of our Division Literacy Plan. And it is a component required of all divisions as part of the Virginia Literacy Act, which aims to reverse the trends and improve early literacy outcomes for the Commonwealth's youngest learners. And I will add that Newport News began that process long before it was required and long before other districts.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, Ms. Lori Wall, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Searl's Law, Vice Chairwoman, Dr. Best, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell. I'm here this evening to share, as you know, an update on the development of our Division's literacy plan as required by the Virginia Literacy Act. In twenty twenty-two, the General Assembly of Virginia passed the Virginia Literacy Act, establishing the state as a national leader and enhancing literacy outcomes for its youngest learners. This multi-year implementation is set to commence in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In February, the board approved Benchmark Advance as the core instructional resource for our division in alignment with the Virginia Literacy Act mandate that every student in grade K five receive core literacy instruction grounded in scientifically-based reading research and evidence-based literacy instruction as stipulated by the Virginia Literacy Act. I'm here this evening to discuss another critical aspect of the Virginia Literacy Act that will take effect in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The requirement for each division to develop a district literacy plan delineating their strategies to fully fulfill the mandates of the Virginia Literacy Act. To facilitate the development of the Division Literacy Plan, a template and instructional guide has been furnished, providing essential support to vision, to divisions during the creation process. This slide outlines the six integral sections that the plan must encompass. The initial section of the plan is dedicated to articulating the district's literacy vision, including the timing and methods of communicating this vision to various stakeholder groups. Our team initiated the development of a district vision in the fall as part of our efforts to streamline the curriculum. The vision presented on the slide embodies our dedication and the outcomes of this commitment as we strive to equip our students to be active contributors to their community. The second section of the plan details the high-quality core supplemental and intervention materials selected by the division from the Board of Education's approved list. The third section outlines the evidence-based reading research training that will be employed within the division, including implementation training for the new core program, Benchmark Advanced. The fourth section details the student assessment, screeners, and diagnostic tools that will be utilized within the division. Newport News is among seventeen school divisions in the Commonwealth participating in the soft launch of the new K-three screening tool, the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener, or known as vowels, that is also a requirement of the V L A in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for all schools in the Commonwealth. Our educators have been trained in using the screening tool and have been providing feedback to the V L P office regarding the new assessment to aid in the final modifications of the assessment to be administered by all districts in the fall of twenty-four, twenty-five. The fifth section of the plan specifies the resources divisions will use to monitor the literacy progress of their implementation, including expectations for lesson planning, lesson delivery, walkthroughs and feedback. And the final section of the plan requires divisions to describe how they will involve parents and caregivers in the implementation of student reading plans in grades K through three, in K through three, as well as in their child's literacy development. Displayed on the screen is our division's timeline for completing our plan and obtaining board approval in June. The plan must be approved by the local board and submitted to the Virginia Department of Education no later than July first. With our literacy vision established, our core program selected and approved, and initial professional development planning underway, we are confidently progressing into our final planning stage. So, therefore, tonight, I am happy to take any questions at this time about our plan. Dr. Best?
So, my question is, what would you say regarding this plan to a parent with concerns like Ms. Facin?
Um, about spelling in particular, or just about our process in general, so.
Regarding spelling and our process?
Sure.
And her concerns.
So, um, I would say that no matter what division that you're in, the Commonwealth has said that our, our plan should be grounded in the research, the science of reading, research, and evidence-based practices. And that has been laid out in, um, the training that we provided over the last few years to our teachers, that are letters training. They'll also receive training by the Virginia Department of Education next year. And so, all of the resources that we're using are also on an approved list by the Virginia Board of Education that are all grounded in reading research and, um, evidence-based practice. So, um, when we talk about spelling, spelling is a great example of it is a critical skill that kids should learn. It's grounded in, um, the reading research and all of the five pillars. And it is, um, the evidence says that we are to explicitly teach students how to spell and read. Um, and we call that decoding and encoding. And that our resources and curriculum, um, establishes that, uh, kids are taught how to do that through a very explicit scope and sequence. So, parents will know that because our plan will have, what are the resources that you're teaching our students? And we will have professional development and resources for our families to partner with us.
Thank you for your answer, and just being a former educator?
Yeah.
Educator, I could keep up with you, so I, I might would suggest this.
Yeah.
Make it even s-
Even simpler.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, yes.
Um, I, thank you, and I just want to piggyback off of what Dr. Best asked. Um, you know, as a parent, so, a lot, a lot is online, over to these resources. But will we be intending, planning to, able to, I'd like to see us be able to send more things home with families that maybe they prefer the paper or over dinner, they can discuss what, uh, we're doing vowel consonant vowel, those sorts of things. Because some families may not have the opportunity to, but some may, and to the extent anyone could do a little bit more, it's gonna, I think, elevate the whole class.
I think a beautiful piece that our, our, uh, Adoption Committee found that was a real plus for that partnership is that we used to have, um, basal texts that were book, one book with all of our, um, stories in it. The way Benchmark Advanced is designed is that those are consumable. And so, what they're reading in school, they're able to annotate and write, but those go home to families then. And on the back of each one of those is actually parent activities. So, every time they are in a unit, um, and there are ten units, those will go home with families, um, after each unit. And so, that anthology will then almost be going home, um, with families rather than we collect them at the end of the year. I think that's a great resource that will really be, um, powerful for our partnership. Other questions? Yes, Mister Brown?
I'm gonna stay on spelling, um, some more questions about that. Thank you for the clarification about the, the spelling being critical to the five, uh, uh, components of the science of reading. So, give it, if it's, given its criticality?
Yes.
What, how often, um, is spelling a part of the curriculum? How much spelling, uh, tests do the kids, you know, or do we plan on giving the kids? How much was, how much is spelling gonna be a centerpiece versus, uh, versus a supplement?
So, currently, um, if you were to go into our kindergarten, our first grade, our second grade, where they're learning foundational spelling skills, that's happening daily. Every day, kids are reading and spelling and getting explicit instruction. I think the difference would probably be where we were, um, in, in past, uh, practice, you might have seen we're memorizing spelling words, and you're getting a list and you're saying you have to memorize these. In the science of reading, you learn that we don't learn by sight of just memorizing words that we, that our brain is wired in patterns. And so, the neural pathway is that I'm able to read that word because I quickly understand patterns in my brain, automatic. And so, we're teaching students, and the new standards outline, it won't say, um, you need to memorize these however many words, it'll say you need to learn in kindergarten short vowel patterns. And if you know short vowel patterns, you'll be able to spell hundreds of words. And once you learn vowel consonant E and long vowel patterns and, and R controlled in first grade, you'll learn even more words to spell. So, it's, it's designed to learn patterns in order to spell and read words. That's by design in our standards, it's by designed in the evidence, and it's by designed in our resources that we have just purchased. Um, so.
Cause I, so I understand, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize, teach us to recognize patterns, which will then help them to spell words. But, at what point, memorization of the word at some point takes place? So, from the, you know, for, as a parent who's, who's watching this, you know, isn't, isn't there a list of words that I can teach my child that will help prepare them? Or is that not the case? So, there isn't, there isn't a list of words?
Not a best practice, no.
Okay.
No, we would say you would learn patterns, and so you would work on spelling words with your child that has those patterns that are within the scope and sequence for their grade level. And as the grade levels move forward, you're learning many more patterns, and you're also le- reading much more complex text. So, your spelling moves with your reading, if that makes sense. So, if your question is, are word, spelling words in isolation a best practice moving forward as a result of the science of reading, the answer would be no. What replaces that is that we still teach kids explicitly, but through patterns and, and, and mapping of words. And that is within, that is happening daily. And by the end of the year, what the standard says in first grade is that you should be able to read any R-controlled word, any short vowel word, any long vowel word, that's a single syllable, or it might say multi-syllable.
Okay.
So, it's not just a set of words, it's any word.
I see how that, that's gonna be a struggle for a lot of parents, you know, in, in bridging that gap. So, are there some resources or some classes that we're gonna provide to parents?
Yes.
Because parents are gonna wanna help their children to learn to read. So, how are we, how are we planning to come alongside parents and help them understand this pattern recognition?
So, in section six, that's one of the places where it says, how will you, uh, work alongside teacher, uh, parents? One thing will be through the vowels, uh, you saw our screening tool is changing to vowels. Through their vowels data, when teachers are sitting and explaining, what does this data say about your child's decoding and encoding or spelling and reading? They would say, here are resources. And if a student has a student plan, um, that is required as part of our, our division plan, there ha- there's a family resource section, so the teacher is required to- be the development of the plan. You understand your students' data, you understand what we're doing. Partner with you at home, and that's the story of the student, of the student plan and our partnership. Let's see, Dr. Best?
I, I was gonna let Marlon go.
Oh, did Marvin go first?
No, I, I think she, I think she hit on it, as far as making it simple for the parent too.
Yes.
What we call a take-home packet, you know?
Yes.
When you're traveling to see your grandmother or whatever, the parent and the child can be working on spelling, no matter where they're at, correct?
Yes, sir.
No special software, no, you know, I need to call you to get access to something?
Paper and a pencil.
Okay.
Piece of paper and a pencil.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir, Dr. Best.
I know you shared with us some new research, but the research still says that for parents, reading to your children?
A hundred percent.
Reading with your children is the best thing that you can do to help your children.
Yes, so that's the other side of the research. The spelling falls under that, um, decoding and encoding. But the other part of that, um, research is language comprehension. And so, to expose students to background knowledge, vocabulary, sentence structure, um, and comprehension. Those, we, we always say, every night, reading with your child or, um, your child reading to you will always- will always be, um, part of our work that we'll do moving forward. Some things haven't changed, Dr. Best, so that's one. Other questions or comments? Thank you.
I just, I, I just want to say, um, in terms of the VLA, um, I, I'm excited about the changes that are coming ahead. Um, we still need to push for funding, uh, at the state level, making sure that in the long run, they continue to support because the money has to follow, uh, the mandates. And making sure that that happens. Also, the Virginia Department of Education has resources for parents as well. And that's something that they can also look to, um, in order to get additional support with word study and spelling.
And those are on our, um, division website under our elementary English, um, site. So we can, if, if you are talking to parents, that's the place where you could quickly, um, get them to. Thank you so much. And thank you for answering our questions. Absolutely. I look forward to coming back in June. We will move on to five point zero two, the attendance report. Five point zero three, the membership report. And five point zero four, the construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item five point zero five, comments by our superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I will begin my comments this evening by congratulating Crittenton Middle School English teacher, Ms. Shonda Woods. She was named the 2025 Virginia Region Two Teacher of the Year by the Virginia Department of Education in a surprise announcement this past Wednesday. And while I never remember whether there are fifteen or sixteen school divisions in Region Two, I'll just say, she beat out the rest of them, okay? Other divisions. Um, the Virginia Superintendent of Public Education, Dr. Lisa Coons, joined members of the school board, local elected officials, and Crittenton students to recog-, and staff to recognize Ms. Woods. She is now one of eight region finalists for the state teacher of the year. So she will now be going up against the winners of the other regions in our state. I, on a personal level, have had the pleasure of serving with her. She was a teacher at Huntington Middle School during my tenure of principal. And I am proud to say I actually hired her back then. We are really looking forward to her working hard to be named the Virginia Teacher of the Year. That is our goal. Newport News Public Schools has once again been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation by the Nat-, National Association of Music Merchants Foundation in recognition of our commitment to music education. We do here in Newport News offer a diverse music curriculum at all grade levels, which includes music instruction, performance ensembles, and community performances. So a very special thanks to all of our music educators who ensure that our students receive quality music education. This past Friday, our community had the opportunity to enjoy our student vocalist in action. More than six hundred students performed during the first Newport News Public Schools All-City Music Festival right here down the street at Christopher Newport. Performances included middle and high school bands, choirs, orchestras, guitar ensembles, and elementary choruses. So congratulations to all of our student performers. We celebrated the new artificial turf at Todd Stadium with a ribbon-cutting ceremony last Thursday. The turf installation was recently completed, and the field does look amazing. If you have the opportunity, please take a look. Now, in addition to being used for track and football, lines have been added to create soccer and field hockey fields. Uh, we are looking forward to hosting more athletic events on this brand-new field. This is also National Autism Awareness Month. And there are numerous community events taking place throughout April to increase understanding and acceptance and foster support of children and adults with autism. Newport News Public Schools has a wide range of resources to support and advance students. So I thank all of our dedicated special educators, special educators for their service to our students. April is also designated as the month of the military child, when we recognize and honor our military-connected students for their resilience and their courage. Our region is, of course, home to Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine, Navy, National Guard, and Reserve families. As a show of support, we invite all students and staff to wear purple tomorrow, April the seventeenth, for Purple Up Day, to show our combined support for our military students. That concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair. And as Mr. Hunter says.
Great things are happening.
Great things are happening in Newport News.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and Mr. Hunter. We will move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. So you, you may notice that there is a, um, seat empty, uh, this evening, um, for our school board rep. I am not going to steal his thunder. We will let him, let us know, uh, where he has decided to go to school um, for college, for his next steps. Um, but there were some commitments that he needed to make this evening. And I'm just beaming up here because that is what this is about. It's about our students taking those really great next steps, um, with the encouragement of Newport News Public Schools behind them. Meeting adjourned.